Right, you're on record.
All right, good evening, everybody. You guys good down there? Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA 10:4-6, Except of New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, call the roll, please.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Ms. Grignani.
Here.
Mr. Joskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Moserella.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Reddy.
Buzz in.
Mr. Willins.
Here.
We have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
President.
Our board engineer, Mr. Lemanowicz.
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
All right, as everybody knows, last meeting was the chair's, Mr. Kaplan's last meeting with us, he stepped down onto bigger and better things, so we're gonna open up nominee. Bigger. We're gonna open up nominations for a replacement chairperson? Any nominations?
I nominate Laura DeRogno.
Second. Second.
I move to close nomination.
Oh.
I loaded a lot.
We got two, we're good. Nominations are closed, anybody else?
Nope.
Nominations are closed.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani. Joskowitz.
I'm voting for myself, yes.
Moserella.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willins.
The floor is yours, ma'am.
Here we go.
Congratulations.
Hey!
Past Presidents Bob Ira Kane and Dave Kaplan. Those are big shoes to fill, and I thank this board for electing me as your chair. Thank you. Okay.
Pledge?
Yes. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, white nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
I ask that we all stand, please, in a moment of silence, in remembrance of lives lost today. Thank you.
I just swear your professionalism, please.
Please.
Mr. Chadwick, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Mr. Lemanowicz, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear that any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here in the public that would like to speak on anything other than what is on our agenda this evening? See none. Nora, we have correspondents? Yes, we received correspondence from Mr. Zaire, 24 Seminole Avenue, Block 539, Lot 9, requesting application 2416 be carried since December 4th, 2024, due to working with an engineer for stormwater management. So if anybody's here for that application, there's gonna be no new notice, this is your notice.
Any questions about that? Okay.
Do we have to make a motion to grant that?
We do. Yep, we do.
May we have a motion, please?
Some move, Berkowitz.
Second.
That would be with all necessary extensions, correct?
Yes, it is. Got different.
Yep.
Nora, please call the roll. Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Moserella.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willins.
Yep.
Resolutions, application 2415, Lot and One. You can do the first one on its own, the rest of them in a group. Okay.
First one, some move. Second.
Grignani.
Yes.
Moserella.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willins.
Yep.
Application 2446 and application 2429.
Some move.
And 2449.
2449.
And 2449.
Some move. Second, Joskowitz.
Hold on. Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willins.
Yep.
That's it.
Yes.
Application 2444, Frank and Denise Petropino. Please come forward.
Can you raise your right hands, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Can you please state and spell your last names, starting with you, please, ma'am? Your servant. Thank you.
Could you please, please sit down? Could you please tell the board why you would like to have this application approved?
We replaced the air conditioning. It was for a new air conditioning to be, you know, installed.
A new unit, our old one broke, so we replaced it with a new one.
How long was the old one there?
Thirty-six years.
I think it did. We did.
It's going in the same place as it was?
Same place, exactly, everything's all the same.
Same size, everything's the same.
So Larry, you're here?
Because it wasn't approved thirty-six years ago.
Yeah.
The minimus, I'm gonna be voting in favor, let's move ahead. No questions, ask them, we'll settle it up. Is it on a concrete pad?
Uh, yes.
Does that preexist the concrete pad, or do you need to install that?
No, they, it's, um...
They put it in one day.
It, when they, it's not even a side, it's on concrete blocks.
Okay.
And then they have like a, a plastic tub that holds it.
Gotcha. I just wanted to make sure I had the resolution correct, that's all. Is it side yard?
It's side yard, yeah.
Yeah. It's existing, same as it is. No change. Don't worry.
Any questions from the board of this applicant? Would someone like to frame a...
Application 24...
Do you want to open it to the public? Oh, sorry about that. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak in regard to this application? See none? Would someone like to frame?
Application 24:44, Frank and Denise Petropino, 7 Menito Avenue, Block 563, Lot 9, Zone R4, recommend granting a C variance to install an air conditioning unit, replacement contrary to Section 430-35, Column A. Second, ready?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Moserella.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willins.
Yep.
Any idea?
Thank you.
Could we give this president any idea when the application will be of, given to him? So what happened after it's approved, the resolution, within 10 days, I'll get it out in a mail to you, then you'll go, and I'll mail it to you, you'll go to the zoning department for your zoning permit, and then to construction. Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
You too.
Application 2453, John Thomas.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you state your names, spell your last name, please?
John Thomas.
Could you tell this board what you would like to do at your home, please?
Sure, I'm replacing my air conditioning, but the air conditioning that was previously there was built too close to property lines, so I'd like to get a variance to replace it at the same spot.
Is it going in the same place?
Yes.
It's the same as the last guy?
Yep.
Did you get thirty-eight, thirty-eight years out?
No. Yeah, I got nineteen years out, so.
Pretty good. I got six out of that, so.
I think it's the minimus in nature, gonna be voting for it. Yeah. Second.
Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak in regard to this application, pro or against? See none? Would someone like to?
Application 24:53, John Thomas, 62 Winterstead Drive, Block 1402, Lot 11, Zone R4, recommend granting a C variance to install an air conditioning unit with pad contrary to Section 430-35, Column 8. Second, ready?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Moserella.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willins.
Yep.
Application is approved, you will be getting a notice from this board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Application 2454, Stuart Freed.
Another air conditioning?
Moserella.
Can you raise your right hand, please?
That's right.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
For sure.
State your names, spell your last names. Thank you, you can have a seat.
Mr. Freed, would you please tell this board why you would like to have this application approved?
We are installing a mini-split system, air conditioning unit, was just a little bit too short of the code to reach the, it's actually just a little bit too close to the neighbor's property by about six inches. We're installing an air conditioner unit because it's just becoming too hot for us to live in the house.
And this is a new unit, not a replacement?
This is not a replacement unit, it's new, it's just becoming, it's kind of a health hazard, it's just becoming too hot. My wife has health issues, and we were told to keep the windows closed and keep the, keep the temperature down.
Did you talk to your neighbor that you were gonna put?
Yes, of course we did, they're very cool, they said, do whatever you gotta do.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions from this board to this applicant?
Nope.
Would someone like to frame? Oh, I keep on forgetting, sorry about that. Are there questions from the public in regard to this application, pro or con? See none? Would someone like to frame?
You're on the roll, Scott.
Approval?
Okay, application, it's the minimus in nature, I'm gonna be voting for it, and I'm gonna stop talking again. Application 24:54, Stuart Freed, 32 Beechwood Avenue, Block 576, Lot 4, Zone R4, recommend granting a C variance to install an air conditioning unit with pad contrary to Section 430, Column A. Second, ready?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Moserella.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willins.
Yep.
Mr. Freed, your application is approved, and you will be getting a notice from, from the township.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Application 2439, Alfred Figaroa, 82 Beechwood Avenue, C variance to install a shed, replacing the existing one, and six-feet-high fence contrary to Section 430-10C, shed and rear yards, Section 430-10 dot one, Set 430-35, Columns 10 and 13.
Can you raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you state your name and spell your last name?
Alfred Figaroa, F S and Frank, I, D S and Golf, U E R S and Roberts, O A.
Mr. Figaroa, would you please tell the board why you would like this application approved?
The shed that I've currently got in the backyard sits about an inch, sorry, a foot, foot and a half away from the existing property line. Been there for about forty years, according to my neighbors who have been there for fifty years. It's falling apart. That said, there's a bunch of, of, let's just say, trees, poison ivy, grass behind it, that I can't get to or maintain it, just to get it out of the way. So, that said, one, I'd like to replace the shed, because it's falling apart, two, I'd like to move it away from the property line, so I can get behind there and do whatever maintenance I need to. Also, in the future, if I want to install a fence, replace the fence, right now I've got what you would consider a chicken wire behind it, I'd like to replace the fence line eventually, I'd need space. And generalizing it all, that's pretty much what I, what I'd like to do.
Is the proposed shed the same size as the existing shed?
Yes, sir.
And the six-foot fence is only for the back of the house?
Yes, sir.
Not front, yeah, okay. Not the front.
So the, the, taking the old shed down and putting the new one up, you maintain the same coverage, pre-existing non-conforming, but it's the same. It was fifty-three point thirteen percent now, it will be fifty-three point thirteen percent with the new shed.
With the same exact sized shed, yes.
Okay, and the, and the building coverage will also be exactly the same business, the same shape?
Okay.
It's actually getting further away from the property.
That's my intent, yes.
And the fence is going around the backyard, side and the back?
Yes, ma'am.
Of your property?
Are you replacing chicken wire with a decent fence?
Yes.
Sounds good to me.
Are there any questions from the board of this applicant?
Yeah, it's back here.
Any questions from the public regarding this application? Would someone like to frame?
First, Scott. Okay.
Come on, come on.
The minimus in nature, replacing the shed with the same-sized shed, I'll be voting for it. Application 24:39, Alfred Figaroa, 82 Beechwood Avenue, Block 575, Lot 17, Zone R4, recommend granting a C variance to install a shed, replacing existing, and six-foot-high fence contrary to Section 430-10C, shed, side, and rear yards, Section 430-10I, Section 430-35, Columns 10 and 13. Second, ready?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Yes. Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willins.
Yep.
Application is approved, you will be getting notification from our township.
Thank you very much, everyone.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
Thank you for your improvements.
Application 2424, Charlotte Hogan, Timothy McCall.
Well, it's been going pretty smooth tonight, you're hoping it's gonna stay that way, huh? Can you both raise your right hands, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your names, spell your last names, starting with you.
Charlotte Hogan, H O G A N.
Tim McCall, M C C A L L.
Thank you, you can be seated.
Would you please tell the board why you would like this application approved?
Well, we have a small house and a growing family, the addition that we're seeking to add would enhance the safety of our home by creating greater visibility inside the house, and it's one of the most efficient economic ways to add more.
And since we live in Mount Tabor, our lot size is non-conforming the way it is, small lot size, and our plan stays within the impervious coverage requirements and the distance from our neighbors.
Are you moving it further away from the street, is that what's happening?
No, we're adding in line with where the front of the house currently is, which is non-conforming currently.
You're removing your slate walk?
Yes.
And you're adding? You're adding the new addition?
Yes.
Correct.
No, no planned walkway to go around the addition?
Correct.
Just gonna dig out?
Just being grass, yeah.
Correct, yes.
So the access to the patio on the back could be from the back of the house?
Yes.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, it's very de minimis, just one silly question, the one variance you're seeking is looking at building coverage, maximum lot is fifteen percent, you're going sixteen point six percent, very de minimis, de minimis, but I guess that might point be, it's so small that addition, what, what's, what's, what's that one point six percent additional needed for?
It'll, it'll allow us to move our kitchen and create a little bit more living space on the first floor of, of the house, and...
It also is a, the basement, first floor, and would add a bedroom onto the second floor, so it's a very efficient, the most efficient way we could figure to add.
The second floor, you don't need a variance for it?
Correct, correct.
Impervious coverage, okay, all right.
Are you doing a full second floor or just on the addition floor?
It's, um, it's a Kate-style house, so it's a, technically a half floor, it adjusts in line with the current roof line.
Okay.
So it will look like the house was built that way, and in keeping with our neighbors.
I get it, okay. Outside will be uniform?
Yes.
Yes.
So there's not currently a second floor anywhere else, or there is a use adding to that second floor?
Just exactly the way it currently is, yep.
Any additional questions from the board to this applicant? Looks like a nice job. Would some would like to frame a resolution? Questions, I apologize. Are there any questions from the audience in regard to this application, pro or con? See none? Would someone like to frame a resolution for this applicant?
Thank you, best. All right, I'll give it a go.
Application 24:24, Charlotte Hogan, Timothy McCall, 17 Hillsinger Road, Block 91, Lot 17, Zone R3, recommend granting a C variance to construct a two-story addition and screened-in porch contrary to Section 430-35, Columns 4 and 10.
Second, ready?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Moserella.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willins. Thank you. Be notified by the town or application is approved.
Good luck, brother.
Thank you, lots of luck.
Good luck to your growing family.
Application number 2447, Hmat Associates Incorporated.
Good evening, everybody, Thomas J. Malika Jr., Vogel, Chase Collins &amp; Schneider, on behalf of the applicant, Hmat Associates, and congratulations, Madam Chairwoman, on your appointment this evening, I hope we can be as efficient as the prior applicants you've seen and heard from tonight, I have two witnesses, site plan engineer, Eric Keller, professional land use planner, Christine Capone, and they'll explain to you in testimony why we are entitled and hopeful that the board grants final site plan approval for the trucking terminal that has been constructed at Block 768, Lot 1.01, in the township, or simply generally located at 1100 Eggwoods Road, so with that, I can have Mr. Keller sworn in perhaps, and we can get right to it.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Correct. State your name, spell your last name, tell us who you're employed with.
Certainly, Eric Keller, K E L L D R, employed by Bowman Consulting Group, 6 Campus Drive, Suite 302, Porcifany.
Why don't you provide the board with the benefit of your education experience?
Okay, I'm a bachelor of science in civil engineering from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute, I attended a master's program at the University of Maryland, I am a licensed professional engineer in this state for many, many years, and I have testified on numerous occasions before this board, I like to use a new face as from the last time I was here. I can go on, but why bother?
Yes, you are.
In the, in the keeping of brevity.
Eric, can you summarize for the board what exactly has happened since we obtained a preliminary site plan and variance approval for this property and its use as a trucking terminal for the parking of automobiles and various related type vehicles and equipment?
Certainly, I put the site plans on the board, just in case there's any questions. This application received preliminary site plan approval back in 2018, at the time the township was still granting preliminary and doing final when it got built, I understand you don't do that anymore, but that was, we only have preliminary approval, so we're here for final site plan approval. This project started construction in early 2023, the work was completed earlier this year, the township building department issued a certificate of occupancy for the trailer on the property and for the associated building-related work that was done primarily the light. The construction of this site is generally in conformance with the approved site plans, preliminary site plans that were granted by this board, any of the deviations are minor in nature, it do not affect the function or performance of the property. When this project was approved, and we're still seeking to maintain those conditions of the approval, is, we had four options for how this site could be used. Essentially, it's a large, not paved area, it is sealed, milling, which is consistent with what the approval was for, at our strike right now for truck park, but there were also other options for a mix of truck parking and car parking in different configurations. The owners would, are seeking to maintain that, that was granted by this board as part of the preliminary approval, depending to meet their needs and to meet their tenant needs for the use of this property. There was also a minor subdivision that was granted by this board to provide a sliver of land to the Lawrence County MUA, that has been perfected, they now own the land, deed's recorded. This project also required a flood hazard permit from the DEP, that was obtained with a certain amount of net fill that was permitted to be placed on this site, we have verified that the fill that was placed on this site is actually a little less than what the permit was granted, which is a good thing, so we're within the confines of our DEP approval, and the only other real change is that the office trailer was approved, it was granted a variance because it was too small, it was granted a variance to be 500 square feet, and the office trailer that is on the property, which is acknowledged in the certificate of occupancy, the building apartment is 320 square feet, so we're exacerbating previously granted size of the office trailer by 180 square feet. We have received comments from Mr. Chadwick, from Mr. Lemanowicz, we've provided a summary letter in response to those, it was dated August 30th of 2024, I will state that we have been working with the project surveyor, we do have some grading modifications, minor grading modifications around the basin to increase the height of the berm, it had become overgrown this summer with all the rain and everything else, and once we got that all cut down and cleaned up, we realized that we needed to do a little remedial grading, which we've been working with the applicant to source appropriate material, do that work, we'll get a final as-built survey and provide it to Mr. Lemanowicz and to the board, showing that we have complied with the detention basin requirements, storage requirements for that reason.
So even though the detention basin has changed slightly, that doesn't change its functionality in any way, correct?
No, it's, it, right now, the elevation of the top of the berm around the basin is No. Right now, the elevation of the top of the berm around the basin is at what is a flood hazard elevation, but you're supposed to override a foot of freeboard. Should be a little bit higher. So, but the outlet structure itself, the DEP made us change the water quality devices as part of the approval. So we have these green infrastructure treatment devices called aquaponics. That will still function as designed, and the basin itself will function as designed. Just to note, when there's a flood hazard storm, the Whippany River has a much bigger drainage area than our site, and the flood hazard elevation of the Whippany River will actually inundate the detention basin. But we have an approved design, and we have to meet.
And you indicated previously your willingness to comply with Mr. Lemanowicz's recommendations?
Correct.
Could you address Mr. Chadwick's recommendations?
Let's talk about the regrading before we get to the real issue.
Sure.
Mr. regrading, did you take any of the trees along 280 down?
No, this will not affect any of the trees along 280. I was out on site Wednesday, Monday. I can't even remember what I did yesterday. There, we noticed that there are five trees that have died. They will be replaced at the end of the month because, you know.
Along 280?
Along 280.
Right.
Yeah, they'll be replaced. But any of the work within the basin itself is nowhere near any of the trees.
Okay.
As far as...
I would assume Mr. Cofone is going to address the one issue that is in their report, because you addressed all the others.
Yes, he's going to address the variance.
I do have a question about some of the conditions for approval that were in the prior resolution.
Okay.
I don't know if you have that.
Unfortunately, the one thing I forgot to bring was the resolution for me.
Well, I think that probably be easy to address. So it's paragraph seven, and number one was a lighting plan approved by the boards and township experts. Was that done? Do you know if that was completed?
It's lighting plan?
Lighting.
Lighting, yes. That was approved by the township engineer, Mr. Leesa, and that was documented, I forget when, sometime in like 2019 or...
Okay, there was also a condition that there be...
Were the lights on on those poles, or do we need security?
They're, I don't think, I think they're on a photo set.
I don't think there was a condition of the lights out in the resolution.
I mean, it's along 280. It's next to the transfer station, and it's across the street from the sewer plant. So, I mean, the lights on 280 are on all the time, and we're right near the Edwards interchange, so, you know. It's a well illuminated area.
Gotcha. And there was also a condition that there be a landscaping plan approved by the boards and townships experts. Do you know if that was completed?
Yes, it was.
Great.
Times were very busy.
Okay. And then a fence as approved by the board's planner. Do you know if that was accomplished?
Yes, it was approved.
Great. And the last condition in this paragraph was all approvals by the NJDEP and the US EPA. I assume those were all done.
That is correct.
Great.
We have a closure plan approval from DEP. We also got the flood hazard permit from DEP.
Okay. And all the other conditions of the resolution have been complied with, correct?
That is correct. The township would not have signed our preliminary site plans without satisfaction of all those.
Trade, I just wanted to make sure it was on the record.
Nope, absolutely.
You said originally, and this is probably a silly question, but you said the, you were granted the ability to build it 500 feet for the trailer, 500 square feet, right?
Correct.
Because you originally had it too small. What was how small was too small?
Well, the minimum size is a 5,000-square-foot building, and we got approval for a 500-square-foot trailer.
Okay.
I mean, it's basically a storage area, and you need just some place for somebody to manage the operation, control traffic in and out, things like that. It was determined that even 500 square feet was larger than they really needed.
I read it as it had to be 500 minimum. I'm good now.
No, that is.
Oh, well, you built it, you built it at 320.
Right. I don't know exactly what we do about it.
Well, you're asking for an amendment to the previously approved...
I mean, if that's what you determine as a board is required, I did notice for it. I mean, I think you heard Eric say he feels that it's de minimis and not a substantial deviation from what was preliminarily approved.
Right.
But if this board and its experts and professionals disagree, I did notice for...
Put on the record exactly what the trailer is being used for. It's being used for the office, the administrative operations of, by the tenant of, who's running... How many employees are there at any one time? Well, we don't have any tenants yet. There are two office areas within the trailer with a bathroom. I mean, 320 square feet take out for the bathroom, and, you know, I mean, it's a generous space. I mean, it could accommodate, you know, a handful of employees, probably. It'll depend on what the tenant wants, needs placed there. But essentially, this is a storage yard for...
Is that trailer going to be manned 24 hours?
I don't know. I mean, the gates, there are gates that access to the property, and they're locked when the facility is not, I mean, right now it's not in use because it's not...
Well, the nature of the tenant would seem to be would be all housed throughout the day and evening.
They, it would be tenant-driven. I mean, if they wanted to have a 24-hour security presence, they could certainly do it. I mean, it has bathroom facilities.
It's not set up that way. Doesn't have beds in there.
Would the board like to ask any more questions of this applicant?
Thank you. Okay, with that, I have a, again, our licensed professional land use planner, Mr. Christine Cofone, here tonight.
Well, I did have one more question.
Sorry.
I'm a little confused. In Mr. Chadwick's report, he talks about removing pages five and six.
Five and six are the alternate usage plans of not all truck parking, but a mix of truck and car parking. Those were granted by this board as part of the preliminary approval, and the applicant does not want to give up their rights to that. So we are requesting that those sheets remain as part of the set.
And I would refer the board and its professionals to pages five and six of the resolution that contain recitations regarding those four plans.
So these are alternative plans depending on the tenant?
Correct. Right, and the idea is that, you know, the CO is issued, and the tenant comes in, it should be allowed to configure its operation based on one of those four plans. The tenant then leaves, and a new tenant comes in, it should not have to return to this board, or my client is the owner of the facility, should not have to return to this board to amend the site plan approval. Rather, it should be an administrative function that could be addressed by the township engineer. With any dispute that can't be resolved returning to the board, but I think that it's better, not only for my client, but for the board and the township as well, to have that kind of mechanism in place.
Just gives them some flexibility.
It gives us flexibility.
At this point in time, you do not have a tenant.
That's correct.
But the plans that were submitted at the time that you got preliminary site plan approval included those alternates, as you indicated, it's referenced in the recital of the testimony contained in the resolution.
Yeah. And these plans are exactly the same as those, except it's final site plan.
Right.
And there are some additional notes referencing the as-built survey.
And to Mr. Keller's earlier point, the preliminary plan set was actually approved with those sheets.
With those alternates.
Right. Included there.
So you're not asking for any additional use relief other than what you were previously granted?
Correct. That's correct. And again, I'm suggesting that if you agree with me, that this can be an administrative function when or if a configuration needs to change, as long as it changes to one of the approved options, okay? Township engineer can simply do it. Does not have to return to the board.
I understand. So you okay with that, Mr. Chadwick?
Condition number one, we lumped three different activities shown in what, Sheets four, five, and six.
Where are you in the resolution?
Item condition one. And we talk about a truck terminal, which is the sheet, the first sheet of the layout, which is Sheet four.
This is how it's framed today?
Yeah. And Mr. Keller has basically taken the term "truck terminal" to include the layouts of five and six.
So this is five.
Which becomes a car storage yard and trucks. And the next one is construction vehicles and cars and trucks.
Five and six, sir.
Just to make sure I...
Six is just a foot block.
Right. Just to make sure I understand, Mr. Chadwick. You're talking about condition one of the approved resolution.
Correct.
Which, just for the record states, "The conversion of the vacant capped landfill into a truck terminal shall be accomplished in accordance with the testimony and plans submitted by the applicant to the board."
You're testifying that both Sheets five and six were a part of the preliminary approval?
Correct. Yes.
Right, and the notice calls this out, too. I mean, it was approved, and we're seeking now final site plan. But it was preliminarily approved as a truck terminal for the parking and storage of automobiles, trucks, trailers, buses, and construction vehicles and equipment with such parking and storage authorized to be configured under four matters.
That's a notice for... You just read?
That was the notice for the final site plan. The preliminary plans, as Mr. Keller testified, have those, all four alternatives...
I think that's more important than what you put in your notice.
Yeah, well...
These are the...
They were in the preliminary approval.
They were, absolutely.
Okay, because when I went back to search my files, whatever, I had that sheet, well, Sheet four, whatever it is. Okay.
I have like 14 different versions.
Okay, and we can just verify that. I mean, if it turns out that they weren't part of the set of plans that we approved a couple of years back, then we're going to come back and see and talk about it. Otherwise, I don't see any need to discuss the issue at all. If they were part of the preliminary approval, then my statement is incorrect. If they weren't, then we've got to deal with it.
I'll put on the record that they weren't part of the approval, and I'm happy to provide, you know, I think I had the sign preliminary approval. I may not, I don't remember.
I'm sure the town hall is...
Oh, yeah. I know that Zora has it.
Right, so the reference to plans in paragraph one would include those sheets.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Keller, we're happy to have Mr. Keller provide confirmation as a condition of final site plan. Okay, I think that clears up that issue.
And the rehabilitation, do you have a performance bond on this or no?
I don't believe that any bonding has been, I mean, it's built.
I'm talking about the landscaping.
Not to my knowledge.
The approval, I think, has a, most approvals have, and I'm sure our plans say there's a two-year guarantee that if the plants die, then they have to replace them. They were already where, you know, they would have replaced them now, except they told them not to, because with the weather we're about to have, they'll die again. So let's wait till the end of the month when it cools down a little bit, unfortunately, and we'll plant the trees in. They're all evergreens, so...
Is that the little vacant area along 280 you put up, right?
We had them. Let's refer to the plan sheet that you're going to do, okay? Referring to Sheet seven to 13 of the final site plans, we have two clusters of trees. One that starts just north of the detention basin and extends in a southerly direction along the 280 right of way. And then we have another cluster where there was, I think, a gap in the trees up near the north end, and all that material has been planted.
Are there any other questions?
So it includes that, basically, they've satisfied my report, and they've already addressed the engineer.
Madam Chair, just to close that circle, I happen in contact with Mr. Keller and agree that the detention basin needs some massaging, we'll say. It's not a major, it doesn't appear to be a major excavation at this point, just making sure things work. And I don't see there being any issue with that that would require them to come back. I have no issue with handling that as a condition if the board so desires.
Can the applicant's committed to satisfy Mr. Lemanowicz on the detention basin? Any other comments?
I'm good. Great. So are we ready for Ms. Cofone or...
Manish.
Yep.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your names, spell your last name.
Christine Cofone, C-O-F-O-N-E. First name is Christine with a C-H-R-I-S-T-I-N-E. Business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701. I'm testifying this evening as a licensed professional planner. I've testified here in Parsippany and about 450 other planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey. I'm never home at night. I am practicing for about 28 years now as a planning expert, so not quite as long as Mr. Chadwick, but not brand new either. I teach planning and zoning courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services. I'm a court-appointed affordable housing special master in a few dozen communities, and my licenses are current and valid.
You are qualified.
Thank you.
Christine, can you address the variance that we cited for the further undersized trailer?
Yes, so, I mean, it's really a very de minimis exception because the board granted the relief previously, there's a 5,000-square-foot minimum building requirement, so that just speaks to, you know, what is required, where we had approval for a 500-square-foot one. So certainly, the deviation of about 100 square feet shaved from that is going to have no material impact on this property. It's not as if we were building a building that was going to have a ton of employees going to it, and it changes the dynamic, or it changes the intensity of the use. It's really just a more efficient trailer on site. It really has no material impact or no impact at all on the operations of the site. So to the extent that the relief is required and we need to reprove the D-variance. When that was testified to, it was really testified that under Price-Vimagey, that that was a bulk variance that was subsumed into the D-variance. So that's how it was testified to in conjunction with the last application. I would say that that is still appropriate for the board to consider that relief in the context of the overall D-variance. And it continues to be my position that the site is suitable for the proposed trucking terminal and other vehicle storage, and that the board can grant that relief for the nonconformity with the 5,000-square-foot size and with no substantial detriment to the town zone plan.
Is the fact that it's less in size create any issues in your mind in terms of its functionality as it's for its intended use?
It does not. It will continue to function as it was intended. I believe Mr. Keller provided pictures to the board of it. It's there, it's functioning. So I see that it will have no material change from the site as was approved by the board.
Right now, you don't have...
I'm sorry, right now, there's no tenants for the site. What if the tenant comes in and wants to have more employees on the site longer term? What's going to happen? I mean, I guess it's a silly question in a way, but the point being, the structure that you have right now can serve a couple desks and a couple phones.
Right, so either way, if it was an applicant that was going to have a ton, a significant amount of employees coming to the site, the change in the size of this trailer, I believe they'd have to come back to the board. We're only talking about 100 square feet.
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
Right, so a 10 by 10 area. So the change, to me, is not material. If you had such a change where the applicant was going to require space for an applicant, space for employees to come and spend some time there and function, they would need to come back to the board and show it on a site plan. So, but if that were the change, they were doing that anyway, because whether it's almost 400 or almost 500, not a great place to store or house a ton of employees. So in my opinion, it's really not going to have any impact whatsoever.
I guess just out of curiosity, what was the reason for deciding to build it smaller and not just do the 500?
You know, it was probably the available products that they could get there here. So probably, you know, what they could get access to, what they could find, you know, to build and reasonably get to the site.
Okay.
They found a trailer someplace in Brea. I think that's what Mr. Keller's report shows.
Okay.
Any questions from the board, this applicant?
Phil, do we need to clarify this trailer? I think we all assumed it was like a, not a dispatch drill, but just somebody who checked people coming and going from the site. I would... I would think it's going to take on a security function too, unless it's, do you know if they're going to put cameras all around or...
You know, I'm not sure how they intend to use it, if they're going to put cameras on it or not. I think that would be somewhat tenant driven. So when they have a tenant and they know how long or how many people are going to be here, then I would think they'll know what type of security system they would be having.
You mean in terms of the usage?
It becomes a security thing. I think you're going to have somebody sleeping there.
Don't they have to be awake?
No.
You ever seen overnight people?
Bells, whistles.
Maybe we should put a churro in that little trailer to keep them off.
I know, isn't there a condition in here that all the trucks have to be empty? There's no, it had to do with fuel and that kind of thing.
Well, it's a rehabilitated landfill, so there's no hazardous materials stored on site, petroleum products and whatnot. And remember, the applicant and its tenant users of the site will always have the duty to comply at all times with not only the permitting and governmental approvals they've obtained, including those obtained from this board, but with all township ordinances, with the construction code, with the construction subcode. So there's noncompliance, there's enforcement actions, or the applicant or its tenant returns to the board to seek an amended approval, but we're not at that point right now. We're simply seeking final site plan approval. An amended preliminary, I guess, if, as Christine said, to the extent required for a smaller, albeit slightly smaller trailer.
I don't know. I'm looking for clarification of the ones.
Okay.
Were you stating that they could have trucks on the site full of fuel, oil?
No.
Okay.
No, I mean, the trucks could park, no, cars, parked cars and trucks have oil and gasoline.
That's not what I'm talking about.
No, but no tankers, I think is right.
There's a condition in the resolution that says the applicant will not be allowed to store any hazardous or flammable material.
Correct, yeah. We fully intend to comply with them. Again, it's a...
I just want to make sure a story doesn't eliminate a tanker.
Any additional questions from board?
No.
Anyone here in the public that would like to speak on behalf of this applicant? In favor of it? Against it? I don't see any. Would someone like to frame a resolution for this applicant?
Sure. It is de minimis in nature. They're going a 100 square foot less, means nothing. I'll be voting for it, and it's application number 24, call in 47, H. Mann Associates Incorporated, 1100 Edwards Road, Block 768, Lot 3.01, Zone LIW-2, recommending granting a final major site plan approval of a parking lot and truck terminal and the variance for the smaller facility.
Subject to the conditions we discussed.
Subject to all conditions discussed.
Second, ready?
Kirkowitz. Kirkowitz.
Bernie.
He said yes. Yes, he said yes. Josh Kowick?
Yes.
Muzarella?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willand?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'll send you a draft of the resolution. That'd be great. Make sure we've covered everything we talked about tonight. Thank you again. Have a good night, everyone. I say everyone again, and congratulations again.
Thank you, sir. May we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Every meeting has to be this way. They're cutting. Air conditioning for everyone. That's why it's so cold in store doors already. Too cold here because of too many air conditioning.
It should be this easy. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
It should be this easy.
You're the best, you know.
And the best pens and fire. Thank you.